ICANNI Committee of a Whole Meeting for Tuesday, October 18th. I'd like to call this meeting in order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all council members are present. Any public comment at this time? No public comment, we'll move on to the committee meeting items with E1, private well water testing discussion.
You need me, Mayor and Council. I was requested to bring some, bring up why we test for private well testing because residents who have some concern with us having them test their private wells. So, in city code, per city code, the city shall require annual testing of water, quality from building or private premises served by private wells in the city where water is readily available. So if water's not readily available, we don't ask them to test their water. It's tested for coliform bacteria and the nitrates, the coliform should exceed zero. The nitrates can't exceed 10. If the well, the private well test fails, they can take the test again. They can then treat their well if they can get their well to pass. If the well doesn't pass, they're asked to hook up the city water. There's several labs, there's a letter sent out with several labs they can choose from to have their wells tested at. I've taken probably three or four calls this year already on it. In the research that I did on it, the Department of Health doesn't require us to have residents test their wells, but they recommend that the wells tested for coliform yearly and nitrates was every other year. But they don't ask you if you have a private well that you have to have it tested. They have no jurisdiction over it.
Do they say, do they have a recommendation of how often?
The Department of Health wants to ask you if you have a private well to have your well tested annually for coliform and every other year for nitrates. Outside of that, they have no jurisdiction over it.
So they recommend it, but they don't require it?
Yeah.
So what do we do? Do we have a, what's our ordinance?
We rec, we do it every year.
So we require them to test every year. If they, as Mr. Sylvester stated, if they don't pass, because maybe their bacteria level was too high, they can retest or they can shock their well with, like a household bleach product typically works in wells, and then retest and submit that to the city. I'm not exactly sure when this went into effect per se, but I do think it probably was because we have city services and instead of making and requiring people to connect right away when that infrastructure went in, this was an ability for them to keep their wells as long as they were good. Just like the septic is the same way. We don't require any septic testing, but if their septic does fail, they're required to provide that to the county because the county does the septic inspections. And if their septic fails, they are required to hook up the septic sewer services at that time.
So Matt, does the state require us to, or the county require us to do it at all?
No.
So not five years, not 10 years, not, nothing?
No.
So Josie or Matt, is there a big problem with it? I mean, when we have people test, do we ever see, what?
I missed it, I couldn't hear.
Do we ever see any issues when they do test?
I think we've had.
We have had some come back for bacteria testing and I am aware, I couldn't recall the property ID right now, but they have had, they have had to shock their well. And then they've been able to provide a good test result to us. So I think we do it from the city standpoint is not to catch them when their system isn't functioning properly to make them connect, but really it's from a public health standpoint that we want everybody to be drinking good water and we have no control over wells.
So I understand that, but we shouldn't be saying you have to do it. You know what I mean? I, I'd want them to all be healthy too.
What brought most of this up is these people that were brought in this last annexation.
Yep.
I, I totally understand if you're living in town and you have city sewer and water right there already. I mean, you go down the street and there's a house right up a main street and he's got a well and a septic system in there, I can understand that. But some of those annexation properties were in there. Those people probably just redid their septic or they got a deep well. You know, anything, you know, water, potable water, yeah. If you have any common sense, you want to test to make sure you're not having any issues in your water.
And personally, I would too. I mean, if I lived there, I'd want to test, but I, I wouldn't want to be told I have to test.
But I think again, we're back in that same, same, it's a special circumstance. Those people did not ask to be annexed and they were forced and they're the ones that are coming in with that complaint.
Yeah, that provision with it requiring the testing wasn't looked at when we did annex in any properties. So it has been a part of our city code for a long time. And if it's something that council would like to choose, it would just take an amendment to the ordinance.
I think we, I personally, I think we should amend that, just like we did with some of the driveway garage stuff that we did on that special annexations. I'm not trying to show favoritism to those people, but I think we've gone through enough hassle with that forced annexation that's created another problem down the strim. I mean, I think some of that stipulations we put on that annexation is if they go to sell the property or they update their property additions, whatever, they gotta bring in things into city code. And I think we should maybe stick with that same aspect with their well issues.
I have nothing against making a recommendation they test it. I mean, but I don't, I agree with, I would agree with the mayor, we shouldn't have to, we shouldn't, we shouldn't force.
Shouldn't be telling them.
I'm thinking we recommend that they, you know, and this is across the board, not just people that we just annexed. If we're gonna do it for them, I think we should do it for everybody.
Yeah, Council, I do recommend that we do it across the board. There aren't any special exceptions for people who are annexed and within city code. I think it should be across the board. If we want to put the testing requirements in the hands of the property owner, it should be across.
Yep, and then, but we can still provide them with places.
Information.
Information, just sent out, I don't know, because we send them a notice every year. Maybe we could change the notice to, we recommend you test your well. Here are some options for you to choose from.
I don't disagree with that because I can't believe there's that many.
Just as a reminder, so if they want to go ahead and do it on their own, here's some sources for you to do so.
What did Mr. Heeman say, like $95 to test?
Well, they're, they're, I'm sure they're all little.
They're all very.
Five dollars higher than five dollars lower than the next.
But I, I can't believe there's that many wells that are actually in, let's, let's just.
How many notices go out, Matt?
What's that?
How many notices go out?
I think there's like 25 notices that go out with people that have water available.
So approximately 25 water tests are coming in.
And if I recall right, there was how many that were annexed? 30? 31? Was it that many, Mike? You and I had that number on the button at one point.
At one point.
Yeah, now I forgot.
Some of the people who are providing tests, they were before the annexation.
Yes.
Way before the annexation, they've been doing this.
There's, there's a portion of them right downtown here that are, have private wells. Couple across the highway, there's another one over there. It's, you know, there, there are some downtown is where they mainly, mainly are. The annexed properties, a lot of them don't have water. Tyler, for the most part, there's nobody on Tyler except for on the very end of South Passage that has water available. Fourth Avenue, there's nobody on Fourth Avenue that's got water. They don't get letters, only if water's available for you to hook up. Those are the ones that get a letter.
I think we should just feel like you said, across the board, let's, let's just say we recommend it, but if, you know, personally, if I had a well and it went bad, I'd rather hook up the city water and I ain't gotta deal with another well.
But I don't want to be told that I have to.
No.
So Council, just to make sure, so what I'm hearing is a consensus from the, the committee here is that we don't want to require testing. What about in code, it says if provided that your chemical analysis does not pass, you must connect, what will be that matrix or that trigger to have them connect? Would it be like the sewer then? If you, if, just to have language in there that if your system water well fails, then you will connect? So that'll be like if your septic fails, you will connect?
How about then you can connect?
Well, no, I, I'll tell you what, when you go in to put a septic system, it's gonna cost you 10, 12 grand because you're gonna have to have perk tests, you gotta go through all the rigmarole, you gotta dig it up.
26 grand, my friend just put one in.
Yeah. And it's gonna be half a lot cheaper to tie into the city sewer and it is that. And then now you don't have to deal with that expenditure again.
Same with a new well, I mean.
Five, 10 grand?
Yeah.
Depends on how deep you gotta go to the well.
Yeah.
Council, beyond the cost of putting that in, we have language in there that doesn't permit for anyone to put in a well for, a new well for potable water, for drinking.
Right.
If they have water available, because that's why the system is there, is ultimately everybody would connect. You wouldn't continue to allow them to put their well in, a new well, if it failed. You'd have them connect.
Right. But how, do, is, I mean, I don't know, do you gotta pull a permit to put a well in it?
It goes through the DNR and the.
Actually, wells go through the, actually wells go through the state of Minnesota.
Or state, Department of Health.
Not everybody can do it.
Right.
Right, so.
There are certain setbacks with the private well.
How would the city get notified that, would the city get notified if someone was pounding a new well in?
We don't allow it.
Right, but I mean, if someone were to do it.
I guess we've never had, like if they didn't come to the city and ask and they just hired a well drilling company.
How would the city know, I think is what Councilman Collison's asking.
I, I do think that the public water supply, doesn't the Department of Health require the city to sign off on?
There's, there's a form you need to fill out if you're putting in a private well. It has to be approved through, through the Department of Health. There's certain setbacks as far as how far it can be from a sewer, how far it can be from the house, how far it can be in different areas.
So we're gonna know?
If they're gonna do it legit, you're gonna know. If somebody's gonna go and wanna pound a sandpoint in their backyard, you might not know. But if they're gonna put in a legit well, it has to be registered with the state of Minnesota, get a well, unique well number, it's gonna, you're gonna know.
City will know, be getting notified?
You would know, yes.
Is it, is it true that the county doesn't require anybody to test at all? I mean, I know that that was something that George had mentioned.
No.
So they don't require testing either.
It doesn't, but it's generally if you go to sell your property, you have to test it anyway.
Sure. Yeah, most of the time the buyers will want it done.
Buyers, well, the buyers will request it in their, as in their offers on the properties. And I think they have to per financing anyway, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd be just fine with not requiring them to test, but still sending out stuff to remind them that, hey, you know.
So we're doing our part, looking out for them.
And I mean, as far as if, if it fails, like you said, how are we gonna know if it fails other than if they come to look to do a new well, I guess?
Yep. So you'd still, I think you'd still have to have the language in there saying if it fails, you'll have to connect to city water.
If it's available, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, if it's available.
Like Steve, you said that's gonna be.
I mean, for the, for parcels that are on.
You can, you can buy, I mean, like your water bill, average water bill is like $80 a month and that's maybe on the high end for some people, but boy, you could buy a lot of water for a $15,000 well.
For parcels, a lot of those parcels that were annexed, they don't have, if they don't have water available, they would be permitted to put it in a well. Because they don't have water available. No, no infrastructure there. Staff will prepare an ordinance amendment and bring that forward after it's been posted for the 10 days and make sure that council agrees. And then also, just for clarification, the requirement right now that's out there that they send, submit their testing results, we are going to waive that for this current annual cycle?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to E2, illuminate ICANNI update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We just wanted to give an update on illuminate ICANNI and just revisit some of the plans that you guys made back a year ago in October of 2021 regarding tickets and our plan moving forward. The fee structure was determined to be $12 per adult, $10 per child, four to 13 years old, and free for children three and under. And the council also approved free parking in city lots for event attendees. Tickets will be made available electronically or at City Hall during open hours through Eventbrite. If we pass the ticket fees and sales tax through to the buyers, it will be 1336 per adult and 1126 per child. If we absorb, it'll make it 1064 per adult and 874 per child that will receive. We just wish to confirm this before we go forward with creating the platform.
What were the ages for the children?
Four to 13.
Would be 10 bucks.
Yeah.
Under three is free.
Did we do 12 and under free? Or even 13 and under free? I mean, so it's a little more affordable for families to go through?
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that we are looking at the competing events in the area because Bentleyville's free, the Holidayzelle's free. Sam's Christmas Village is $20 per adult, $10 per child, three to 10, and then free for children two and under.
I mean, you're thinking if you have, your family have two adults and three kids underage, 12, you know?
Right now Jimmy couldn't afford it because he's got another child. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, she'd be free, so for now.
We also want to make sure that we're setting it according to our expectations and Sam's Christmas Village is amazing, as you all are aware, and the goal is to make illuminate ICANNI that amazing, but the first year, I'm, it'll be third best, right? Josie is what you said? But we do want to keep that in mind too.
That's good.
And as Stephanie mentioned, just to reiterate, to make sure that council is also in agreeance with setting it up digitally. So through Eventbrite, and is everyone aware of what Eventbrite is?
Oh, go ahead, explain.
I've heard about it.
Okay, do you just want to give a recap of what, how people would buy their tickets?
You would buy your ticket. We'll have QR codes available at the event online. We'll have links, so we'll make it really accessible for everybody to use. Most people have used Eventbrite. It's as similar as to what they did for the rodeo, from what I understand. But then we'll also allow people to buy cash here. We, it will be during the day, during the open hours. It just really requires less staff if we don't have to have cash at the event because we can rely on volunteers to chuck people in versus having a dedicated staff person there collecting and watching the till, I guess, when people walk in.
What the hell is salary? You couldn't afford to stand out there an extra hour?
I'll be there.
So if they show up at the gate, then like just wanting to get in, then they would just buy the ticket on Eventbrite?
Yes, yeah. That's why we'll just direct them there and we'll have volunteer, a volunteer to outside helping people who have issues or need help finding that.
That are technically challenged.
Yeah.
Me.
So you definitely, so digital is the only way to get in, there's no cash or anything?
If you want to use cash, you can buy it at City Hall during the week, so we'll have that available.
Yes, correct. It would be no cash at the gate, no credit card at the gate. It would be scan the QR code, as Stephanie mentioned, like the rodeo did, if you show up at the gate.
We could also do the liquor store if that's, I mean, their hours are different.
That might be a good idea.
Because not everybody can get here before City Hall closes, commuters.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like the Wild game, there's no printed tickets anymore. They don't accept cash at the Wild. Everything's debit card or you gotta get your tickets downloaded on your phone and they scan it when you walk in. Those contactless, whatever.
The most important part for us is the cashless because it will allow us to have less paid staff there, so.
As far as snow removal, if we get a foot of snow the day before, are we gonna push it aside or?
Our plan is to just go all out, no matter what the weather is, so we'll just see where, it's gonna be beautiful every day.
A foot of snow can be beautiful.
There's no doubt in my mind.
Okay, alright.
No snow this year.
Very tragic weather then. But I mean, there'll be enough room for a snow coming to get through.
Yes, we have plans for plowing.
So the widths are, they thought of, thought of.
They have to be ADA anyway, but they're, so yes, they can pass through it.
I, I actually like the idea of no cash out there. That, I, I don't want to say it, but you know, current elements moving around and if there's no cash, there's nothing for them to steal. And it makes staff and volunteers even that much safer. I would, I would probably say no cash on site or whatever, just.
Yeah, I think it will make, allow us as staff to dedicate our time to more important things, like making sure all the lights are working.
Who's changing the bulbs tonight?
Matt?
What are you looking for as far as consensus or anything, or?
Just looking for consensus on the fee structure, if there's any changes you wish to make to that, looking at it again before we go live next week, so.
Yeah, you have some good ideas.
I just, I just want to make it affordable for the families.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
So I guess.
I, I think 10 bucks is a little heavy for.
For a child?
Yeah.
What age limit do you put it at?
That's the question.
Well, you could put at the same age limit, just reduce the price, maybe five.
What about, what, what about 12 and under free? You know, and you're, you're a teenager now, so now it's five bucks.
Another suggestion I have is if we went to maybe five or $7 for children and then gave all of the intermediate and primary school students in the ICANNI Cambridge School District a free ticket from the school because it promotes the event and stays local. That way.
School let you do that? Because sometimes they're a little stickler on that.
I think we should be able to work with them, we'll try.
As a nonprofit, I think they would go for that. I think if it was a business.
You'd be surprised what they haven't allowed in there.
We've been working with the community ed in the school district pretty closely lately, so, I mean, it's worth an ask, but I think that could keep it local too. People will see that it's, you know, their kids getting the benefit and then regional kids will.
Well, you might get kids come home with, you know, you got a couple of kids come home and got free passes and then mom and dad feel obligated, they gotta go and then all of a sudden now we're dragging, they're coming in and they're paying, so.
And if you're like me, you forget the free pass at home anyway.
Then you better have your QR code with it.
I don't know, whatever price you guys would like to set the youth price at then.
What'd you say the adults were?
$12.
Children are 10, four to 13, and then three and under's free.
Maybe we should just cut it in half for teenagers, like six and then.
And 12 and under, free. I don't care where he goes. I don't know. Is that gonna, is that gonna kill us financially?
I think it's gonna get a lot more adults through the door. What do you think, Mike? Here the math was.
If the kids are cheaper, you're gonna, I mean, obviously the kids need parents to bring them through. So if it's cheaper, like she said, you might draw more adults to bring their kids through.
Yeah, I, huh, understanding the, understanding the elasticity of demand on, on an event like this is a little tricky. It'd certainly be subjective at best. The one thing, whatever the council would decide is, I think, can be fine. I haven't heard anything that's so out of bounds that we should not consider it at all. The, the only piece of advice I would suggest to the council is, is to remember that it is always easier to lower your price next year than it is to raise your price next year. That's, that's the only thing I would, would put out there.
I agree with that statement.
Well, with that being said, what would you still?
You could say special first year pricing.
Yeah, I think.
If you thought that you maybe wanted to be lower at first and then, I mean, worst case, you said, ah, we're keeping that price all the time. You could say it's a first year.
Right.
Price or something to get away from that.
So do we stick with these prices now and then next year look at the numbers and then change them, or?
I, I think if we're.
I don't know, I like the 12 and under thing.
The first year, you want it to be a good, a, a big hit.
Yeah.
Or else it.
I think the.
Yep.
I think the rodeo, we did like five bucks a kid, something like that. And I think that was like four and over, something like that, I remember, right? But.
If you think about affordability, five bucks a kid, when you have four kids, that's 20 bucks versus 40 bucks, which is.
That's a lot better.
It's a big difference in your cushion for your pocket.
The schools giving that free tickets, I mean, then you're at least recouping some from out of town people, but.
What if we went seven and under? I mean, that's basically kindergarten and below.
Yeah.
You get in free?
Six and under. That would be kindergarten, wouldn't it? Six and under?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seven is first grade.
I don't know, I still think the kid price should be lower than 10 bucks.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think it should be half of the bill price.
Go six and under free and six to 12 is five and.
12 after that?
And adults are 12.
Free tickets for the students.
Free. Ten under the schools. I was gonna say, this is like of the ideas I've heard so far, I think, I think the idea, at least in the first year, giving out free tickets to the school kids, I think is a particularly good idea. One, it draws a bigger, wider range, right? And we can start pulling people from Cambridge and other neighboring areas. But also, there is this, this idea that once we get people there in the first year, they start to take those photos in those particular booths that they want, now want to recreate that memory going forward. Whether you give them a free ticket the next year or not, those kids are all going to add a lot of pressure to their parents to say, well, I don't have a free ticket, but I still want to go this second year because that was super cool. So there is something to that and we, you know, now this way also have not committed to next year. Maybe we give free tickets to the school kids again next year, maybe we don't, but we can at least now have an opportunity to see how it goes. But that should, I mean, the free, the tickets to the school kids would definitely make it more of a regional draw right, right away.
It's also a really easy way to advertise, so parents know about it, the ones that we're missing on Facebook or with all the other advertising we do. Affordable way to advertise, I guess.
And if we're not able to share that free ticket at the schools, we'll look for alternative ways of passing it out, whether they come to, you know, a family comes here or something, to liquor store, wherever. Pass out the free tickets.
Those, those, those obviously you'd have to print out and then just show them when they come there. And that's, I mean, police officers, that's something, you know, I used to carry the Dairy Queen things. That's something that police officers could carry too in their squads. You know, if you see a couple of kids, whatever.
So if we could have the recommended cost again, and then we need to decide if it is including that Eventbrite fee because there's a charge fee of like a dollar per ticket. So what do you want the final cost to be about that the people pay?
12 bucks for adults, but.
Including the fee? Or it'd be a $1.36 on top of that?
I think I would just include the fee.
Including the fee.
First year at least, I mean, just make it nice and even numbers and.
Yeah.
Okay, what were the kids' ages again?
What do we want to do?
I say six and under free, six to 12 is five and 12 and up is 12.
I like that, close it. Includes the fee.
Or 13 and up, you said? 13 and up is 12.
Would be, 13 would be an adult then.
Yeah.
A $12 ticket.
Yeah, yeah.
Under six is free, then the kids were.
But mom, I'm 12 and a half, probably be more.
Yeah, five or six.
Was it $5 or $6 that you said for kids?
Five.
Five, okay.
Including the fee.
You good on that one, Steph?
Yes, thank you.
No, and then you, and you're in the bottom part of the memo about, do we want to offer a discount for military seniors?
I think we should.
Yeah.
I agree.
So at those reduced costs, maybe a dollar off per ticket, does that seem appropriate?
Two.
Two.
Two?
Yep, make it worthy to them. I mean, the senior's gonna want to come out and see it.
What's a, what's a senior? Steve and I?
Yep.
Six, over 65.
And over, it used to be 55 when I was a kid.
Yeah, well, there's still, you still get discounts at 55 in certain places.
Yeah.
And then do we want in-store liquor store coupons also?
I think it'd be good on you.
I think it would be.
Maybe a sign, like a sandwich board at the liquor store or something?
Yeah, we'll have.
Advertising, the tickets available here.
Stephanie's gonna wear the sandwich, are you, Stephanie, you gonna?
Yeah, I'm gonna dance with Travis's, he said he would do that.
He looks good in a sandwich.
He's so excited about the Christmas decorations being in the PBB building.
Going every night.
He wants to make sure this is a hit.
I thought he was gonna dress up in a Christmas tree costume.
I thought he was gonna, you know, dye, stop dying his beard, so it'd be great. And be Santa.
So for the senior discount?
Just cut out the just for men for a few weeks and let it go back to the natural gray.
Would the senior and the veterans discount be the same, the $2 off?
I think so.
Makes it easier if it's the same?
We want like the, the liquor store coupons, if we do two bucks off, should that be on adult tickets only or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you're over 55, you should be a senior. Don't you?
I don't care, I'm past that, so.
You got the 65? You don't have the 65 covered yet.
Oh, yeah.
That's what it is here, is 65.
Do we wanna leave it at sixty-five?
It seems too old.
Fifty-five?
No, I think we should hit sixty. Let's meet halfway between the sixty-five and fifty-five.
What, what is it at the liquor store?
I feel like we should pick one that's.
Do we do a senior discount at the liquor store?
Yeah, what's that one? Is it sixty-two? So sixty, see?
So they do it basically on social security.
That's a lot of them.
Social security is whenever you choose, I mean.
Sixty is just a weird one, I don't feel like anybody's gonna remember that, but.
Sixty plus.
I'll remember, um.
I know that my mom would bring her grandkids more likely if she got two dollars off, even though it's not saving her any money on anybody else, so maybe it's a good thing, but.
And how old is your mom?
Fifty-seven.
Oh, that's why you're going for the fifty-five. All right, I see what you're doing here.
Jimmy wants to be a senior.
It doesn't matter, do we?
Fifty-seven and a half, Steph.
The liquor store is sixty-two, it's on their website.
We should at least mirror that.
I think sixty-two is a good.
That's the liquor store, sixty-two?
Yep.
Stephen, I can't get in this year as seniors.
No, damn.
We cover everything?
Yes, thank you.
I'd be going no matter what, cause my wife will drag me, I, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. If I got an ARP card, do I get a discount?
AARP?
Yeah.
E three is the meeting and agenda discussion.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council, so I just wanted to give, one is an update and one is a discussion. One of them is, uh, staff, uh, Ms. Jane Strand and myself have been working on a new platform for council and board agendas called Peak. Uh, this is a new platform from, um, on the backend will allow staff to easily be able to put their items in, department heads and supervisory staff write their memos, put their agendas in. Everything will be streamlined for a consistent um look across, which I think is gonna be very professional. Um, it also will help um with digital approvals, so instead of um emailing, email got missed, um, putting paper in someone's mailbox, there will actually be a flow of how a memo will go through to be a, through the approval process. For example, if um Stephanie's requesting funding or an escrow of some sort, it goes through Mike for approval as finance and then it comes uh to me. It'll streamline that process. On the front end, it's gonna be um great for staff to be able to keep track of their items without having to have them printed packets in their office. Um, it'll be able to have um bookmarked pages for each item that you can easily flow through your digital, um, what you'll see on your iPad. Um, also make notes, that'll be very helpful from staff and the board and council's perspective. But most importantly, it is going to aid in a huge transformation of transparency for our public. Currently, how we put our packets together is just Adobe, we merge all the files into one Adobe file. If you pay for Adobe Pro, which most residents probably do not, most homeowners don't, um, you get more functionality, but if you just have the free Adobe Reader, which most of us have, um, you don't get a lot of functionality with that, you can't search through packets for um specific items. If you were looking for, well, I wanna know everything about annexations or whatever topic it may be, you actually have to go in and click in every single agenda link and then scroll through all the pages and as you're aware, some of those large packets could be eighty pages to have to scan through. Um, so I just wanted to let um everyone be aware that that'll be rolling out. Um, Jada and myself be doing duplicate packets in the month of December, um, trying those out, making sure that it works seamlessly for everybody. Um, and then in January, we're hoping to launch it, so then everyone has the ability to have great um knowledge of what's going on in our public meetings, which I think everyone is, would like to see. So that was just an update. Um, the next one was for our meeting, so staff has been looking at, um, just making sure everything is flowing the way it should. And one thing that we've been kinda kicking around is on our planning commission, um, per statute, it says, when you have a public hearing, which as, especially with all the great building that we're having, lots of public hearings, statute says that you have to give notice of the time, place, and purpose of any public hearing. Now, the time that we have set, and this has been done way before many of our times of how we've done our E D A and planning commission meetings, and it's always, or not always, but in the long time, it's been said, following the city council meeting. Staff and I, as we talk about this, the attorney says the statute's kind of vague, but yet we don't designate a time. Um, we have public hearings that happen after council, our builders and people who are making the requests come, sit through a council meeting, it could be fifteen minutes, it could be an hour and a half. And then they go to their item. We do think that it would be best for the public to have a set time for the planning commission and E D A meetings. Um, one suggestion that staff has is that we set it at six o'clock, it'd be before the city council meeting, then if we had an urgent matter, instead of having our business owners um wait for two weeks for another city council meeting, it could be added to that agenda that night. Um, the other thing that we think that it would help benefit, and maybe six o'clock is not the right time, um, but we do think that it might help us in recruiting new um members at large to our planning commission and our boards, if there's a set time. Again, if you're coming for a meeting after council, you have to come right at the beginning of council or you could miss it if we had a short council meeting and it's really hard to determine how long council will go, cause it could be a short agenda, but a really lengthy discussion. So we don't have a set request, but we would just like some discussion if council desires to set those at a specific time uh for the reasons that I mentioned. If you wanted them to also, we could consider it being on a different day of the week.
I do too, I hate this, I hate this five o'clock meeting and seven o'clock works better for me, even though I hate when it goes late, but I'd rather, it doesn't give me a lot of time. I mean, I gotta leave work early to get here by five.
Well, the thing that I was thinking is, so we already have committee of the whole at five o'clock. Maybe we don't move E D A, but we typically don't have public hearings at E D A, we have them mostly on pub, planning commission. If we kept our meeting like today, Cal at five, we make sure that we are done with Cal by six. Worst case, we had to reconvene later if we needed more discussion on items. We have the planning commission at six, cause you're already here, and then we go to city council at seven. Again, worst case, if we didn't finish planning commission in an hour, we could recess it to follow the city council meeting later at that time, but we probably would be done by our, with our public hearings, so it doesn't really matter. And I did talk to the city attorney and that is, we could do that.
I guess I wouldn't mind that if I gotta be here at five already, but the planning commission's the same night as Cal, but but who's to say that planning commissions are gonna last more than an hour, I mean, sometimes public hearings could be an hour, just one hearing.
And we could, like I said, we could recess it if the meeting did not adjourn by seven P M, we would still need to start the meeting for council at seven P M. We would say, we'd motion for, the mayor would ask for a motion, or the chair of the planning commission would ask for a motion to recess it till following council meeting.
Could we, could we possibly push council meeting starting at seven thirty instead of seven, that gives us a little bit of cushion in there, cause we'd still be getting done earlier. I mean, it would, you know, planning commission was after the seven o'clock meeting. We'd still be getting done probably earlier, cause sometimes Cal was done shortly.
Nice to be done at, some times we're done at seven fifteen.
Yeah. And like I said, if it's a short meeting night, if we push it to seven thirty, we're done at quarter to eight, we're gonna be still done by eight o'clock instead of nine.
The other thing to consider too.
It's hard for me to say, cause the way I look at it is, we're here for the people, I don't.
No, I totally got you.
Whether it's five, six, seven, eight, or nine, it doesn't matter to me, cause I'm, I'm here because people want me to be here and I'll do whatever they want me to do, so. I'll stay Switzerland on this and you guys can talk it out.
And Mayor and Council, the other thing to re- to remember is that the planning commission is a recommending board, I know that we have all of council on planning commission, which is not typical, um, because you're making a recommendation to yourself, which is not typical. So if we ever do make the shift of planning commission, going back to uh being members at large and maybe one or two council members sitting on there to help aid in discussions of zoning code things. Again, I think that having those set times would be a major impact and a factor of getting those members on the, on the commission. Or the other option too, and I don't wanna throw too many options out there, is if you're, if we don't make it um be a planning commission that's members at large for the most part and it is just council, do we wanna have a planning commission, cause we're not required to have one, planning commission is set to look at our zoning code and if the request is meeting zoning code and then the planning commission makes a recommendation to city council, because it is just mainly a city council, it's really maybe not necessary to have.
Well, we still, we still too have members at large residents that are on here.
We just have one.
We have one currently, but yes, I mean, we do have that outside perspective, but just something to consider.
Right now, yeah, generally two.
All right, I don't know, I guess I'm okay with the way it is.
I don't mind it being at six, I mean, I'm, we're here, but we gotta make sure our Cal gets done. I mean, like tonight, we got a budget discussion, that's, could be five minutes, could be five hours, Mike likes to talk. Um, but eh, I don't see any problem with it prior, I think I see your, your reasoning, if that comes in and the business is, it's gotta be voted on, we can vote on it. That might work out.
I'm okay with it in any direction too, cause I mean, I can be pretty flexible, so you guys are the ones that.
I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna put it another night, making it five o'clock, sometimes I'm, I don't get back home till seven from work, so.
Well, and sometimes, Mayor and Council, we do put, um, as we can see on the agenda tonight, some of the committee, my, committee items don't have memos. Maybe I can make sure that we have memos on everything, even things that are just discussion points or updates, so then you can be more informed prior to coming to the meeting, so it can help expedite Cal if needed. Um, but it, we can also recess committee to go after any of our meetings that night too, so if we weren't done by the time planning commission was going to start, or sometimes, and we have had this, where we cancel planning commission, then it's a non-issue, um, we could continue to speak on committee items.
The only problem I see with that is, if you have two people that came just for planning commission and then you recess to go to city council, then they're back, you know, if they, if they have things to do or whatever, they might now wanna wait around.
Or like something like that, that situation, we had a bunch of people come in when there was that development over on Wendover, they wanted to do, you know, I mean, imagine telling all those people they gotta come back in another hour or whatever.
Or, yeah, we don't know how long the city council meeting's gonna be, so we really can't.
That wouldn't make anybody very happy, I don't think.
But if they're that passionate and we've already touched base at six o'clock, they're gonna stay until ten o'clock if need be, it doesn't matter, they're gonna stay here.
Well, they're going to, but no one's gonna be happy.
No.
Yeah, but they're not gonna be, but if they're gonna be that argumentative about it, they're not gonna be happy about what's going on anyway.
Right.
But on the flip side of that, we also make people wait for a one-minute decision all the time for planning commission and its business owners.
I don't think a little bit of organization is a bad thing.
No, I'm all for having planning commission at six o'clock.
If that was a consensus, um, we would vote upon it, it would take effect in the new year. It's not in city code, actually, we just would set it in December, we present uh the meetings for the upcoming year in a packet, gets voted upon. Um, so if, if there's a majority, we can just move forward with that, but if there's, if there's angst, we don't have to necessarily change it, it's just staff's recommendation.
I'm okay with trying it.
I am too.
What do you, what are you gonna do with E D A?
Good point too, Councilmember calls, and we can try it and if it doesn't work, we can go back.
Right.
We just have to pu- post notice of the new times.
And what are you doing with E D A?
Still the same.
We would leave E D A the same, and, but typically we don't have public hearings on those.
We're just worried about public hearings.
Unless we wanted to move them, but if it doesn't work with some of the schedules to make that meeting be at six, it could leave the same.
It's only for the sale of property that we really usually hold public hearings for E D A.
I don't recall public being in here wanting to ask questions about that either.
All right, we'll move on to E four, the proclamation discussion. I'm curious where this came from, cause I read it's different than what you're stating in here.
So city code, um, so Jada and myself came across, um, when we were adding proclamations, that city code set, states that except as otherwise provided by law, which I did ask the city attorney which proclamations we need to recognize by law, and he said there are none. All mayoral and city proclamations recognizing events, persons, and official observances shall be adopted by a majority council member, of council members present at the meeting where such proclamation is presented for adoption. Uh, this is just something that we came across, but we don't do that, and so city code says that we have to vote on proclamations, so we just wanted to ask what we, do we want the process to be, do we wanna start following uh what city code says currently, which is, as a proclamation is on the agenda, um, do you wanna vote on it at that time, which right now we have it on our agenda with like our awards and our certifications and things like that, that we don't vote on. Um, another option is, do we wanna have a policy of how they're added, and then we would change city code. Do we want them to be choice by the mayor and then also change city code? Or do we want to have a list go um before the council, maybe we do it annually, like maybe at the time where we're looking at the meeting dates, like that kind of annual business, like here's for the following year. Have a list of all the proclamations to be added for that next year, then at that time you vote them and staff will then add those to the agendas at the appropriate time. Um, those are just some options.
I'm gonna speak for myself on this, I don't think we've ever had a proclamation that was bad.
No.
I, it, I think the last council meeting was brought up, it should also, we should add it into that breast cancer awareness.
Which is tonight.
And I, and I, yep, and I have no problem with any of that. If, if it was up to me to make a decision or discussion, I would say I would vote to leave it the way it is, and I think we're doing just fine, and if we all agreed to that, then we voted on accepting it the way it is, correct?
I think if, if.
That's fine, but then we will um do an amendment to city code, because we're not following what the city code says.
I think if someone else had, you know, a recommendation of something, bring it up.
Can always bring it up, it doesn't have to, you know, I mean.
The, the breast cancer one was never in the proclamation, which I, I can admit that I mirrored what's been here before.
That's why I asked you at the last meeting, I, I said.
I've added two, uh, and that was Grace McCallum Day and International Overdose Awareness Day.
And I have, I have zero problems with any of that, I think that.
What's that?
And the infants one.
Oh, and the infants one, three, sorry. So I've added three, which none of us griped about, and then you mentioned the breast cancer, which I love that one too, so I'm all for that one.
It ain't like asking somebody that's looking for something odd and weird and.
And to be, and to be clear, Council, no one's complaining about any of these, this is just staff notice in our city code that it says a different way than how we've been doing it. I don't have a problem per se.
Glad you're clarifying that, cause I was kinda feeling somebody was.
No, nobody will, no, Mayor, no one.
How are we doing it now, are you just kinda decide, you just kinda decide?
I just, I just mirrored what predecessors had, and I added three.
Well, and I think what, what does happen.
And there were some though that we, Josie and I have talked about and said, eh.
Are they your proclamations, like the mayor's proclamations, right, uh, how do they, I don't know.
It's just proclamation, it really, I just read them, I mean, they're really not necessarily.
All right, I feel offended, we don't have hug a plumber day of proclamings, no.
I mean, they're not.
Good point, I wanted to discuss that.
Weak of the mechanic.
I mean, the only thing I could see coming up would be uh as a problem, I guess, I mean, I don't think we've had anything that was controversial at all that you've, you've done, but I mean, if somebody did have something that was controversial for the rest of the council, I guess, you wouldn't want it to be the entire council represented necessarily by, you know, one crazy person
Proclamation.
that decides they wanna proclaim something else, but I don't know, I mean, I don't, right now I don't see a problem with it, and the council could always decide to, to take that power back too, if they had a, a proclamation they disagreed with, they could say, well, hey, we're gonna change this and, but I don't, you know, I mean.
I would like to bring up to that point, so sometimes I do, and staff does receive, as like the clerk or to our general email box of the city, uh, we do get requests for proclamations, so sometimes they are very controversial and they just haven't gone anywhere. Um, sometimes they email the mayor and myself, and then he looks at them, and sometimes he's looked at them, I look at him like, and he's like, what do you think, I'm like.
Yeah.
Because they get controversial, so we have done that, we just have done it unofficially without a policy, which I didn't really think was a big deal until I noticed in city code of how it said they need to be voted on. So, um, I'm fine with continuing to do it the way it is, and it's kind of at staff and the mayor's discretion.
Which has never been done.
Um, one thing I would like to ask though, is we do recognize a couple of groups of like the police and public safety, um, public works, and maybe we add in all staff. Um, I see very, I, we looked at other cities, and some cities do hardly no, no proclamations and some do every proclamation, and I thought.
Is, is there National Staff Day?
There's a lot of other staff, every staff has a day, so finding something that.
Yesterday was National Boss Day. We don't, we don't need to do any of that, but.
So I thought we could add in something that encompasses.
I'm straight faced saying that too, we don't need to do that. I mean, national police, national public works, if there was national.
There's a national every department.
City Hall Day?
Yeah, there is.
City Council?
Yeah, there is.
City Planner Week, five.
First responder.
We don't need to break them down, now we're just getting ridiculous.
Love your mayor.
Yeah, how come we don't have a love your mayor day?
Cause no one loves her right now.
Right?
So Council, what I'm hearing is that kinda continued status quo is how we've been doing it, is that consensus?
I'm all right with that.
I don't think you and I have done very poor, Josie, cause.
No, I don't, I don't think so either, I just would like, if it's written of how we do things, I wanna follow it or change it to make sure it's how we're following, or what we're doing.
I amend your rights there book and that's what I would do, just amend it.
Thank you for the discussion.
E five, police updates, Chief Myers, I would assume you are the only one in this room that can give that update?
Oh, you're correct, Mayor, so Mayor and Council, I see that I'm before the budget discussion, so I'll try to be brief for you. Um, the only notable updates is we did post a opening for our vacant positions, we received twelve applicants, so we're interviewing ten of the twelve. So that's going forward to that tomorrow. Um, next year in the capital light plan, we have one vehicle, so we are actually working on that now. We've seen, I think it's a twenty, twenty-five percent increase on the uh state bid price over last year. And out of all the vendors, your big motor vehicle vendors that we can purchase from, there's only one state bid that we are trying to get into, and we don't know if we'll get that state bid actually in or not, just because you submit it to them, their w- window opens for, I think, a short period of time and whether they accept those orders or not, so who knows? So you might see that in the future, you might not, we don't know where that's gonna be, but we're trying to get on that early for next year to see where that's gonna lay, and that's for replacing of the.
We're getting the Corvette squad, right?
Yeah, cause we have the Impala, so we're gonna upgrade to the Corvette. So it's been pretty, about replacing that Chevy Impala next year, so we're working on that now, but I'm not overly optimistic.
You still have an Impala in the fleet?
Yeah, that black one.
I thought you were joking.
No.
Was it a two thousand and five or seven or eight?
How do you, eleven, I think?
It's a, it's a twenty-eleven.
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, put collector plates on it pretty quick here.
Yeah, so that'd be the investigator's car in the useful life on that, because it's not a patrol, it's a ten-year, and so this is where it, this particular year, the eleventh year is the year that it fit well into the schedule.
Yeah.
Anyway, moving forward.
Smart car.
Uh, the only thing I wanna bring up, but just, I know we've talked about it before, just to begin, refresh all your memory, that that we have an officer wellness program within the department, it's one of priorities we have as far as officers' mental, physical well-being. Part of that is, is all our officers right now in this third quarter, starting in September, are required to go do a mental health check-in with our selected professional, Marie Ridgway, and they're in the process of that, so that's what we require them to do, and we do that with well-training, we also have peer support, we have two officers that are trained and certified in peer support. So we have an internal peer support program for critical incidents or anything else that happens, as far as officer wellness, this year, we're also gonna take over the the physical well-being as part of your well-being, and have a training coming up here, I think at the end of November, beginning of December, that's focusing on officer physical well-being as well to help with their mental. So that's all I got, hopefully, I'll be coming back next month with resolutions with somebody in this process that we're going to hire. This is process, this is the third time through, so.
I've heard of a few that sounded pretty good.
How are we doing on your transition of building to building?
We're in process, we just actually yesterday got the plans from Wald and Associates, the actual architecture firm, so now we can actually kind of move forward with sending that out for bids for those process for some of the renovation process.
I don't know how that went, is it, are you like tag teaming with the chief, or you are? I'm sure the finance hands are in there somewhere, Mike, you must be the triple team?
I prefer, at this, at this point, I provide the budget, but I'm I'm otherwise done.
The chief has taken the lead, and I'm supporting him where where he needs.
Bids. We guess we would be helpful to know what it's gonna cost, right? Kinda scared, but okay. Good job, as always, chief, thank you. We'll move on to E six, the twenty twenty-three budget discussion, Mr. Becker, you're the only guy that discusses that, so.
Oh, he's leaving.
See ya.
Moving on.
Thanks talking to you. Looks good, thanks, Mike.
Kinda tie on, does he? Well, he does.
We'll try to.
It's a clip-on, but.
Try to keep it, keep.
When they grab it, they don't choke him.
Well, Mike works at City Hall, his might be quick disconnect, too.
No, 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 no. Alright, so yeah, I'll try to be brief, but there are some, there's actually some some important stuff to at least be aware of and have a little discussion on. So first of all, a reminder, before we get into the the bad news and the good news, right, when we put together the budget, three basic things we're trying to do here, right? Steady declining tax rate, no double-digit increases and decreases, that's the metric by which we understand if we have good fiscal management, if you're going up and down double digits, you screwed up several years ago. Levy debt free, right, September twenty thirty, we'll make our last payment on the on the bonds for the BMX building, at that point, we've got a reasonable path to no more, no more debt that requires a levy for as far as I can see in the future. And of course, at the end here, the last part is, we wanna keep adding to that fund balance, right, that's part of the policy, in the good years, you add to fund balance, and then in the bad years, when people actually need tax relief, and market values start to drop, we've got some, you know, a rainy day fund, so to speak, to be able to provide that tax relief when people really need it. So when we came through in in September, we were talking about a levy at a little over four million, twenty-three percent increase taxable market value, which is how we're gonna end up arriving at the tax rate at the bottom, that was a twenty-six percent increase, I just got updates today, and number's actually about twenty-nine percent, it's pretty substantial, a lot of new homes, a lot of new businesses came online, a lot of home values going up. But key in that was that in that budget, we had tax rate decrease of about two point four percent, get us down into fifty-seven percent range, again, keep marching that downward to a steady trend, and try to get into that next class of cities, make ourselves competitive with Zimmerman, Elka River, you know, those types of types of cities, we're gonna keep marching toward that direction. But in that budget, when you have a market value go up twenty-six percent, one of the things you gotta be able to do is you gotta be able to contribute to fund balance, if you're not putting something to fund balance when times are really good, I don't know how you're ever gonna pull it off, right, and then the rest of the plans start to fall apart.
I really feel like you're trying to soften the blow here, I feel like something bad's coming, Mike.
Well, so so we had, what we had, there was a hundred and fifty, a little over a hundred and fifty thousand that we were gonna add to fund balance. Since then, a couple things. I'll skip that first bullet point, I'll reorder this, one, health insurance renewal came in, thirty percent, that's rough, because we're in the first year of a two-year contract with Peep, that's it. Next year, if it comes in at thirty, fifty, whatever, we can look at all kinds of options, but this year, we don't have that choice, so we just gotta eat that. Dental, for the first time since I've been here, changed in in any substantial manner, every year I've been here, I think it's either been five percent or nothing, so the fact that it went up twenty-two percent, maybe it was just, maybe we were due. That one's not a super big deal, dental, we don't really spend nearly as much as we do on health insurance, then of course, we got the union contracts all settled out, so there were some final details, I'd already kind of projected in that preliminary budget, some of the, some of what we expected, those contracts, but there were still some some tweaks and some adjustments there. In the end, that left, instead of about a hundred and fifty, that left us with about forty-five thousand for fund balance contribution, which in the end is not much. And the reason I got the first bullet point in there is because as we're gonna discuss how to address that, I want everybody to to keep in mind that my expectation, and the expectation of most economists, is that you can pretty well figure by by mid twenty twenty-three, we will be in a recession. Also, keep in mind, last two quarters, GDP did actually contract, you know, last quarter, it was, I think it was point eight percent down, but not considered a recession, because the employment market, the labor market has been expanding. I've yet to find anybody that can recall the last time that happened, where you had GDP go down with a growing labor market, that's a particularly unusual set of circumstances. So just keep that in the back of your mind, I'll come back around to that.
I don't wanna draw this out, but for the health insurance renewal?
Yep.
So that opens up every year, when, what month does that usually open up for?
When we get the renewal, or when we.
When you renew, when you re-up.
Yeah, we get our renewals, with people, we get our renewals usually within the first five, six days of October, that's kind of roughly when that happens, and at that point, so next year, if we could, let's say, Peep comes in next year, and they come in at thirty percent again. Next year, at that time, then we would go out to, you know, the healthcare consortium, we could we could consider the private market, we could basically just kind of like, you know, like any family would go on to.
Chop her own.
Yeah, like any family might go online, we could consider those types of options, it may not be a good idea, may or may not be worth it, but we, those are the options we could have.
Ever look at, through the forty-niners?
I've not. This year, we can't, but next year, that'd be an option, actually, we talked about that a lot.
Yep.
We did talk about that one point.
Yeah, when City Cambridge did, they saved over a hundred thousand dollars each year.
So those would be options that we can consider next year, and as far as I'm concerned, when it comes to health insurance, it's sort of like, here are the options, lay them out. Council, here we go, and you can kind of figure that out, so. There's lots of reasons, I have lots to say on health insurance, and I will save everybody a lot of time by not not getting on my soapbox on that one, but. So, alright, I'm gonna say is, the value of fund contributing to fund balance, you gotta build the reserves during the good years, so that you have them there in the bad years, and we'll touch on this a little bit later about how that really works when market values start dropping, even if you keep the levy the same, it doesn't actually help, it doesn't actually provide any tax relief. Problem right now is that market value is a lagging indicator, right, so that if we start to have an economic downturn, and one could reasonably assume that market values will go down, you will find out about that after the fact. Right, so people are going to be hurting while we still have market value up high, but they're going to be looking for some relief, that part's good, but when when people are hurting and market values have tanked, maybe in that second budget cycle, then that's that's when fund balance is super important. Unemployment tends to be a leading indicator usually, in this case, like I just talked about, GDP's actually contracted twice, but the labor market's been growing, remarkable, but nonetheless, there's there's unemployment data on a monthly basis, so we kind of can easily stay on top of that. The economic side, right, growing or shrinking economy, GDP, that's a quarterly thing, so we kind of know where we're at on that, and and what, a month and a half, we'll have more data on that again. This is my little sketch of how this times out, and where this is for leading indicators, lagging indicators, this kind of thing, if we understand that the left-hand side of that bar is today, and twenty twenty-three, the start of twenty-three is coming up, that little green dot is basically where you're sitting with market value. It's oversimplified to say that market values are locked in on January second, but that's kind of how that works, the assessors office is gonna go through and do their thing, but if you're sitting pretty on January second, you're probably gonna be sitting good, that following, that following year, when you come through with your budget. Now, at some point, I'm gonna bet during twenty twenty-three, we're gonna see a bona fide recession, right, contracting labor market, contracting GDP growth. When that happens, maybe it's only six months, right, common recession is only two two quarters, six months, but it could be a, could be a full year, it could last all the way into twenty twenty-four. The purple line above the top, this is that people's perception of how that is, right, some people are feeling the pinch right now, even though there are lots of jobs available, inflation is high, some people are feeling a pinch right now, but if we go to a point where we actually have GDP growth, or GDP is going down, unemployment is rising, right, labor market's tightening, people are gonna start feeling that considerably more. At some point here, and in twenty twenty-three, we'll probably skate through maybe on market value, where we actually have a little flexibility in that next budget, but if we get to twenty twenty-four, and those market values have gone down, and we still need to be able to provide some tax relief, there's going to have to be a really significant adjustment on the levy. And the little, the little bit I do there on the left, or I'm sorry, on the right, is the point I try to make on this, and it doesn't matter what the values are, right, we're just trying to understand the math and the percentages here, if market value is 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 seven, and your levy is a four, you understand your tax rate is fifty-seven. Market value starts to go down, right, goes down one-seventh, down to six, and you say, alright, well, we're gonna provide some tax relief, we're not gonna have the levy go up, we're just gonna hold the levy the same, fundamentally, everybody is going to feel a tax increase at that point. In case, what I'm trying to point out here is, is the value of fund balance, so now on that last part, if market value goes down to six, everybody lost one-seventh of their value, if you wanna hold that tax rate the same, and give people an opportunity to keep their heads above water, that levy needs to go down to two-point, or three point four. Now you either have massive budget cuts, or you plan to head, and you have a rainy day fund. So this is, this is, this is key to keeping all this stuff together. So this is what I would propose to adjustments, this is all stuff that is related to the general fund, right, enterprise funds operate on a whole different deal, so we don't, we don't need to get too into that. First thing, in the preliminary budget, we had excess revenues in the EDA, we can simply move twenty-two thousand, transfer it into the general fund, that's part of the problem. Next thing we we're suggesting that we do is revise our workers' comp projection, we were projecting for, well, I think it was twenty or twenty-five percent higher than the highest that we'd ever been, even though our last workers' comp came down from its high point, so basically. What I would propose is simply, let's just project for, it is still going to be the highest we've ever had, but that can save us twenty-one thousand bucks, I think that's a reasonable thing, if it doesn't pan out, then it's no different than whether you enacted this or not, right? Next item would be, I think we should simply correctly allocate Ryan's time, we've been splitting it between building services and planning zoning, but honestly, there's not really any scenario where he's not spending ten percent of his time doing stormwater stuff, we should just, our allocating ten percent of his wages to stormwater, stormwater can cover it, stormwater ought to, that is, I mean, accounting-wise, that's just the right way to go about that. So that'd save the general fund another eighty-six hundred bucks by expense reduction. This one, the seventy-one thousand, this one would be my error, we don't have part-time officers. When I raise up a budget each year, I start with the prior years, save as a new, add columns, start filling it in, on my wage tab, I had sixty grand sitting out there for for part-time officers that we don't even have. When I add in those extra expenditures.
Score.
Yep, when I add in the extra stuff, you know, the para and all the other things that go along with, for people that we don't have, we end up saving seventy-one thousand six hundred, so I'm gonna have to own that error, but I guess that's why we go through this, through these exercises, right? Got a couple other tweaks, we've got a addition of a watch guard annual service contract, that was simply a number at preliminary, we just didn't know, we had a placeholder, but we just didn't know that, so now we have a number to that, so that's just an adjustment I wanna know, or wanna make sure we're accounting for. Copy release, right now, we don't have a copy at the current building, we'll re-up that, get that going at the new building, so that's another twelve hundred bucks. Then this last one, also, that one's my bad, contributions and donations, we do still collect money, we don't collect money for farmers' market, but we do still collect money related to the street dances, and right now, in the preliminary budget, that number in the general fund is zero, I think it should reasonably be two thousand bucks, small adjustment, not a huge deal, but when you put all those things together, that gives us an opportunity to add a hundred and twenty-two thousand to fund balance. And keep levy the same, we can understand the tax rate decrease being the same, still in that two point four percent range, but this gets us back now, back above the one fifty-one, back to one sixty-seven, so it keeps us in that similar ballpark, where we can sock away some money and still keep that that tax rate going down. Thoughts, questions, comments, concerns?
Sounds good, looks like you're bringing it back.
Yeah, appreciate the. The clarity, you know.
Yeah, and the other part is, you know, the reason we're doing this right now is because we just got health insurance, and also, I don't wanna be having these discussions on December sixth. December sixth, I hope we're all on the same page by then.
I wasn't wrong, you were softening us up. But then you hit us, and it's not so bad in the end, so.
There's a lot of good and bad, and it's, you know, I got a couple errors of my own, health insurance didn't do super awesome, but at the same time, the end outcome works out, that's good, but.
Kind of describes how the Vikings have been so far this year.
Hey now.
What, they're they're make, they're figuring out how to win, but they're not doing it the way we would like to see them, but a win's a win, so.
And in the grand scheme of thing, a hundred and sixty-seven, in in the grand scheme of things, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand is, really is not a gigantic contribution to fund balance, you know, as we go through the twenty twenty-three year, I'll really be hoping that we keep expenses under budget, and that revenues exceed budget, so that there is a de facto addition to that one sixty-seven. I think that's going to be particularly useful in the next two budget cycles, but we gotta be talking about this stuff now, so.
How much would you like to see be able to be transferred into that fund balance?
I'd be a lot more comfortable if that was, say, three hundred, four hundred, to be honest, and I and I say that just because, just because of the math, right, this is the problem, that chart on the right, so when market values start to go down, you know, you, it's not enough to just say, we're gonna keep the levy the same. Market value's dropping, you keep the levy the same, everybody sees a tax increase, and that's, I mean, and that may very well need to happen, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't, in that, in this scenario, that doesn't mean we shouldn't be trying to move to to three point four, maybe we only get to three point six, but we gotta understand that math, and and make sure that we've at least been attempting along the way to put together budgets that give us an opportunity to seize that plan.
Is there, is a liquor store at a point yet financially?
I was just gonna ask that, you took the words right out of my mouth.
That we can pull some from, normally, you put so much of the general fund out of the liquor store, but is there some that could go on the fund balance, too?
Our ideal is to pay for that as quick as possible, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so, okay, so a few things, so the bonds who, if we just stick to the schedule, the bonds are paid off in twenty thirty-six, first call date is seven years, so twenty twenty-eight. The the real advantage to paying off bonds early happens in that seventh or eighth year, if you pay them off near that call date, you really do save a substantial amount of interest, if we waited until, say, twenty thirty-five, and you pay it off a year and a half early, the amount of interest that we save is not probably worth it, to be honest, we'll probably end up paying Northland, or Mariupol, or somebody else alike amounted. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be worth it. So there will be something to be said for that. If you wait and say, all right, we're just gonna finish out the schedule, I do think there's a reasonable expectation in the future that the liquor fund could up that that transfer early. And then at the end of the schedule, you pick up another two-fifty. So if you just do nothing, and even if the liquor store doesn't do gangbusters and we don't up the transfer along the way, when we get to the end of the debt zero schedule, we automatically go from a three-fifty transfer, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar transfer to a six-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer, just like that, that's a big deal. I think we'll be able to do better than that by the time we get there. However, as it is right now, we have all the, you know, we've got, what, five, seventy-five, six-hundred-thousand? Sounds like a fair amount, except based on cost of goods sold at the liquor store. That's not, that's not even three months. You know, you kind of need that store open and you need it operating. And it's, we're operating right now, based on inventory, more as a just-in-time kind of strategy. So right now, I wouldn't be super excited about transferring more out. The other issue is, to the extent that a transfer out that is warranted and justified this year might be beneficial, in theory, that exact same opportunity is available next year and the year after. We don't have any other, we don't have any other expenditures planned or otherwise that would eat that money up, right? If the liquor store continues to make money, it just continues to stack up over there. And that opportunity to draw it out and transfer it is available now and twelve months from now and twenty-four months from now. So at this time right now, I wouldn't try to address it in that manner, I would, I would sit and and wait. I would want to, I would want to see more information come across my eyes and my mind over the next twelve months before I, before I recommend that path.
The economy is not something any of us could do anything at Moal, so.
So this is, you know, well.
I, I, I personally foresee the, this recession is a hiccup more so than anything. It's a lot of it has been driven, like you said, it's, there's labor force, that's, that's why we'll never see what we did in two thousand eight again, because in two thousand eight, nobody had jobs. They're still trying to get people, you're, you're having a problem with your getting your materials, your products. And there again, COVID caused a lot of that issue because they still haven't got out of the actual COVID protocols yet. And they're still working on that assumption that, you know, safe practicing distances and there's a lot of factors going, things can change, November's, things can change in November, for the better, for the worse, we don't know. And it's gonna take a good year from that point to make that happen, so. Pull up our pants a little bit, yeah, but, you know, we don't want to drop the skirt either.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, this, what I'm trying to convey here is, let's plan for the future, let's mitigate risk. We aren't gonna have control over a recession, but there are things we can do in this budget right now to give ourselves at least a few more options in the future.
And what are our other options? I mean, if we want to try to get that fund balance up this year, I mean, what is, what are our options as far as things we could maybe do without or?
Yeah, we, we, there are not a lot of options. I mean, in, in the, you know, in the general fund, as, as we've talked about before, number one cost is, is labor. I mean, there is not a lot else there, to the extent that there are items there that are discretionary, and at least in ICANN's budget, most of those items are technology-related that are in place in order to delay future hires. I mean, that's, that's the point. You know, packet management stuff, laser feature AP workflow, building permit, online portal. I mean, those are, those are the types of things that are in place so that you, when you do have to hire somebody, you have pushed it out as far into the future as you can, and we've talked about this before. Hiring somebody is not something that we should ever take lightly. It doesn't matter what position you hire for, you've pretty much, as soon as you hire a new full-time person, you have pretty much committed a minimum of one million dollars over ten years. Really hard to come around any other way. So there's, there's not.
I would, I'd like to add to, and I think that ICANN is doing as well as we are because of the, the tightness of our budget that we run. I think that it'll come, there's no real easy ways of looking at our budget and striking out all this as easy pickings. We don't have those, because we're brand lean for on our staff side as well as all our other things. I think that it'd be some really tough discussions that council would need to have to look at, whether it be services or amenities and changing the status quo that we've operated at to look for those places to cut. It's definitely possible, but you would either cut amenities or cut services. And that'd be a, a discussion and a choice that the council would need to make at that time.
I've been on board since the start with your plan and budget. And essentially, this is what this looks like you're doing right now, is you're planning and budgeting, so.
Yeah, Jolene, I spent some time looking at our comparables that all present in December and, yeah, we look good.
It's gonna be a rocky road, but I think we can get through it.
I think the cities that we compete against, we have competed against effectively. And I think that we are in, broad brushstrokes, I think we are in a better situation than most cities. There are other cities that have more fund balance that relative, you know, you always measure fund balance as a percent compared to the next year's budgeted expenditures. There are other cities that have more fund balance, but those are also cities that have considerably more debt than us, I also. When they go to cut budgets, you don't, you don't cut debt service payments, you don't cut interest. And if they're gonna allocate, you know, a million or million and a half dollars a year in interest, well, that's gonna be their problem, not ours, so.
I mean, I know we have the, the stoplight, I mean, that kind of goes back to what you're saying. I mean, the, the stoplight, I think, is budgeted for next year, planning, like.
Well, we've had that one budget for a while and that portion of ours is actually, that's gonna be state money.
Okay.
That money isn't even ours, we don't have another scheduled project till twenty twenty-seven. Other than the street light for like street projects, we're twenty twenty-seven and that's, you know, that stuff we're, that's planned to twenty fifty-six and we won't issue bonds till long after I'm retired. And I won't have any hand in that, so.
What about the splash pad money? I mean, that would, would get you kind of where you'd be more comfortable with the fund balance, right?
So this, so splash pad is, is one to be thinking about as well. So what we have is two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, I mean, it's an aggregated, but as I think about what is listed explicitly in the capital room plan, two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars for splash pad, two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand for the restrooms, right? So we have this combined budget, and we've got this match, the grant funds from the state on the top of that. Out of that, four thirty-six, half of that, two eighteen, is coming from park dedication fees. So, yeah, so even if you scrap the project, you have to give up on the grant funds and you can never receive back any more than two-hundred-and-eighteen. The other two-hundred-and-eighteen now sits in park dedication funds, you can't have it anyway. So if it gets scrapped and then in theory, yeah, you could take the two eighteen out of fund nine twenty, transfer into the general fund. But you're gonna have to give up the grant money on the top and you just have nothing for the, the park funds. It's, the park fund money is still there, but there's, there's prescribed use on that, you don't, that's not discretionary.
I, I think when you look at, when you look at, at a big picture and you look at, you go into recession, people are gonna look for those amenities as a relief and make them feel better. And, and it sounds kind of dumb when I say this, but you go into recession, that liquor store sales are gonna go up and up and up.
During a recession, liquor sales will do well and, you know, just like chocolate sales, amazingly, people don't realize that chocolate sales go up.
I, I, I think cutting things like that are, and I think that would be more hindrance to us than what it would get us to. You know, Mike would like to see five million dollars in the fund balance, you know? Unfortunately, this recession is, it's hitting everybody realistically. One of the biggest contractors in the state of Minnesota, Gens Ryan, shut down all new construction. I drive by a used car dealership on sixty-five and there's ten of their vans sitting there. So they're clearing out now, they're, they're stepping up, they're getting rid of people. There are some companies I know and I don't want to mention names, but they've caught, they stopped buying all their HVAC service guys, where services where they make their money, they're not purchasing the materials until they need them. They're not having them on stock in their vehicles, which hurts them. There, there's things that are changing that, you know, they're gonna see some people out in the workforce. But there again, you got skilled trade labor that aren't gonna go work at McDonald's for eighteen dollars an hour that have been making forty. So there's, like I said, you can walk through call pasture and nine times out of ten, you're gonna stick in a, step in a call by. You know, but it's that one time that you don't. And that's what this economy is gonna be like, you don't know if you're gonna step in it or not right now.
Yeah, so I think at this point, it's, it's, let's mitigate the risks to the best we can and remember the starting point we came to. I mean, we really started implementing this plan in, you know, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and, you know, it takes a handful of years to, with this focus.
I don't think we went into it thinking it was gonna be a cakewalk either.
Yeah, I mean, there's gonna be.
It's gonna be a challenge.
Yeah, I mean, to, to, to have a laser focus on those three goals and and be able to, and, and debt-free is an ambitious goal. I mean, let's not forget, when we get to that point, we will be the largest city in the state that is levy debt-free. That's a really great thing, that'll be something to really be proud of. But, yeah, there are gonna be times where it, it's not gonna be a walk in the park and, you know, you, we probably are not going to be able to have the tax rate go down every year. But that's a good goal and as long as we're not sending the tax rate up ten, twelve points, then, then we must have been doing at least some of the planning, right, so.
When was that BMX building done with?
That is the bond issue, that is levy debt dependent, and that is the last one, and we'll make the final payment in September of twenty thirty.
And then after that.
After that, we have no more.
It's all payments coming in for it.
After, yep, after that, yep. And we have, and we'll have no more levy debt, the only debt we'll have will be debt that is for water, sewer, liquor, that is paid for through, through enterprise revenues.
But right now, Rum River BMX Association is basically paying.
Yes and no, right? Yeah, if we just, if we looked at their rents, what they're paying, if I remember right, it takes till like twenty thirty-four, twenty thirty-five to actually have collected enough rents from them on a monthly basis to cover the entire bond issue. So obviously, that won't work, so in, what has been happening substantively is we are levying a direct amount to cover the next year's payment. And that's, that's the process that we're working through.
Do you see any surprises coming? I mean, I know we don't have any bids from like the police station.
It wouldn't be a surprise if you knew where they were coming.
Well, I mean, but, but you can still, you can still have an idea what might happen, right?
In, in, in talks with Department Heads, I think the only thing that we're really wondering about would be the final amount on remodel costs for the PD building. But, you know, that's the kind of thing I would bet that's, you know, closer to a hundred thousand than it is a million by quite a wide margin, right? I mean, you know, if it's gonna be a million dollars, well, shoot, we should have built a, our own building. But I don't think that's gonna be a big thing, that's not gonna be something that's gonna crush our plans by any stretch. We already had fifty grand allocated in this year, fifty grand for next year, so we're already a good chunk of the way there, no matter what those prices come in at. After that, I think that between myself and Jolene and Department Heads, I think we've got a really good plan, I think we've got a lot of stuff in there. Matt told me today, we've, one of our big purchases is it next year or twenty-four for the greater? Twenty twenty-four, he's already got a line on a, a greater that will fit budget, that's used, that is in great condition. And the current owner has agreed to keep our name on a short list and make sure that we are notified when they're ready to part with that. But that's the kind of planning that is super, super helpful in keeping things together, so.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to, I don't, I know there was talk before getting rid of that, but just nothing appeals the hard back off like, like greater.
There's no replacing it. Yep, so, that's that type of, that type of work, I think, is, is doing well. And all this too includes, you know, Public Works Building in twenty twenty-five, paid for in cash, all that kind of stuff, so. So if ever, if council's okay with this, we'll move forward with this, we can expect to see this represented in the final budget for December sixth. And if there's any other notification, any updates, anything else changes, we, we can discuss it at Cow in November, but right now, I'm not expecting that to be needed, so.
As I said before, you've always done a great job on the plan and budgeting, so. I trust in you, I appreciate the, the effort you and the staff have made and fingers crossed.
Financial investigator. We'll do our best and we'll try to be ahead of the game, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Move on to E seven, the moratorium update.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. So I just wanted to give you an update that staff and I have been working on this, coming up with options for zoning, licensing, et cetera. We know that council doesn't want us to drag that out very long. One thing that I did ask for the county to look into is if they were gonna do anything. I did attend the county committee of the whole meeting that they had last week or the week before. And they had shared some interest in themselves also doing a moratorium on the, on the interim ordinance for THC products that were new with the legislature action. One question that I had, and while they may take some time and if they do intend to go forward with that, is yet to be seen. But the question that I had for our council is, since the county does our tobacco licensing, do we want to wait to see if they are going to do something with THC that, because we're seeing a lot of cities and counties couple those two together, the regulatory of tobacco and THC stuff for our products? Do we want to wait to see if they are going to do something on their end and then have the county take that on? Or regardless of what they do, is the council interested in the city just moving forward with how we would like to regulate? If and so in fact we do regulate, we may not, do we want to wait to see what the county does?
I don't think it'd be a bad idea to see what they do, but I think we should be prepared, because we know how, like a stoplight's gonna go, you know what I mean? We're ready to go, they're not, so I don't think it hurts for us to be ready. But I don't think it's a bad idea for us to really pause and see what they do.
Unless it takes too long, I, I picture.
That's what I'm saying, is if.
If they, if they take a long time.
Then we have to react, I agree. And that's what I'm saying, just like the stoplight, we're ready, they're not, you know, that crosswalk, we're ready, they're not. So this, we should be ready, even if they're not.
Give it some time.
Yeah.
I've never been a fan of them doing our tobacco licensing either, I mean, I think.
I'm not either.
I'd rather we do that ourselves too, but.
So Jaden and I looked into that, we don't know how that started. It's kind of like a, I mean, I hate to say it this way, because we don't operate this way in any other manner, but it's like a handshake deal, we ask that they do it, they do it. I'm not sure why that is. Well, Jaden is actually currently, and we didn't bring it up for a topic yet, because she's researching to see what all is involved. Because if it does save us staff time of taking that out, we do have a lot of tobacco licensed facilities or businesses here in ICANN. We don't know how labor intensive that is for her, because there's another agency, was it the secretary, who is the other licensing agency? There's a state agency, Department Health? There's a state agency that you have to go through and we know when we do liquor, which we do on our own, there is a lot of regular role of working with the state and it takes a lot of Jaden's time. So we're looking to see how much time it would take to do our own tobacco licensing and that will be brought forward.
I think that's a good idea.
That's, yeah, that's, I saw, there's a tobacco shop opening up over by Jimmy's Pizza in Dual Square Mall, Mallard.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think.
So they, they, they just, they can, we don't really have a say in that, because it's county.
It's just the county.
So anybody could open up a tobacco shop in ICANN, right now, we don't have a say in it.
Uh, well, the county, it is based on zoning, like where it's permitted in zoning here. But the licensure for it, that the state requires that they have, the jurisdictions licensure, the approval from them, instead of it coming from the city like a liquor, it comes from the county. And I believe their fee, we looked it up, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars annually.
I think doing your homework and that's a great idea. If we could handle it, then.
Because we might, if we do THC reg, you know, we might couple them together like all the other, or not all the other.
And if the city could handle it, why aren't we?
Yeah, that's what I think.
We're looking into it.
This might be the time to, to take that.
But as far as this moratorium goes, I, I think, I'm with Councilman Burgley, if it takes too long, then we need to react. But I don't think pausing, you know, and waiting and see what their thoughts are or what they're going to do, I don't think that'd be a bad idea, but if they're taking way too long, then we, we need to be ready to react.
Jolene, do you have a general feeling what they're gonna do? Do you have a, do you have any indications or not at all yet?
We'll continue to work on it, because I think that we research quite a bit faster.
You don't have to say you think, you know.
It'd be nice to be the first ones to undo the moratorium.
I had bad people, I had somebody really upset with me about that moratorium, yeah. I mean, I don't know, yeah, I think.
That's why I say it'd be nice to be the first ones to open up the floodgates and let's get back to business.
Being that the county added it after we asked them if they were gonna dis- Being that the county added it after we asked them if they were gonna discuss it, um, which they did, I don't know if they would have brought it forward without us asking if they were going to discuss it. So we'll continue to move forward on our end, just because I think that we don't want any potential business owners to be frustrated that they were looking to sell that and they couldn't. And so we'll continue to move forward. Um, I think we'll just keep up going, um, updating the council on what the co, the county is doing. But I don't necessarily think that we should wait, because I, I'm not sure what their timeline is. They didn't share that. But I admire them, I, they did ask me for some help up there, um, asking what, how they could go about it. So I will definitely help guide them in, in a way that fits their needs too, but still continue on our end. Thank you.
Oh, no, I got one more thing that I'm gonna ask of the, of, uh, the committee of the whole. So I've been getting a lot of requests of allegedly, uh, Councilman Collison, you could vouch for this, but the deer on Rum River Drive, they're saying are crazy. And they're asking what our thoughts would be if we permitted.
The deer?
The deer. From that river are crazy in their backyards. They're eating their shrubberies, their plants, their flowers, their trees, everything. So the question that was asked to me, and, and I kinda shrugged my shoulders and said, I'll bring it to the team and see what the team thinks. They wanna know if we would permit them to bow hunt it, as long as the police chief didn't have any questions, comments, or concerns. They were willing to do a raffle or a drawing, they were willing to qualify, they were willing, they're willing to do all this kinda stuff. So I said, well, I don't know. I'll ask the police chief. So I guess I'd like to know your thoughts and the police chief's.
When I, I, I used to live.
Right there, that's why I'm asking.
My backyard was.
The community garden.
Pretty close. I could see it from my deck.
Was there a lot of deer back there?
Being spurts.
I think there's a lot of deer in general this year.
I do too.
Problem.
But I mean, I, I never had a problem with them. I guess my backyard was fenced in. But they never even, I'm, even though they probably easily could jump the fence, they never did.
Cause we don't permit it inside city limits.
Actually, we, I brought this to council, I wanna say last year, to amend it, and, and previous, the ordinance, if I recall, allowed hunting in two parcels, which are two private land parcels, and I identified both of them. So we took that out, and now it's, if you own forty contiguous acres, um, and then you had to be five hundred feet from your neighbors or any, or, or park or whatnot. So that's what it is right now. That's what we brought up and changed last year. Is so anybody that has forty contiguous acres can bow hunt on their property. Now, on Rum River, uh, it, the only thing that the council would discuss is whether you're gonna allow hunting in the park, because the actual, uh, lots that we're discussing, even Dan's aware of, they're, they're not acre lots. They're, they're, uh, point three acre lots on average, point two five to point three, they're, they're small. So that's not feasible to, say you can hunt your backyard on a lot size that's small. Uh, most of that property is, is the city park of the Rum River Bluffs Park. So that would be the discussion that you'd have to have, if that's something you wanna start entertaining. And then whether you're entertaining just that one, or you're gonna entertain other parks within the city too, you have, uh, you know.
You don't that, I mean, you'd almost have to do a lottery, and then you gotta shut the park down for a period of time.
And, and my personal opinion, you know, I spent, uh, my bachelor's degree's in fishes and wildlife, and spent thirteen years with the D N R. Bow hunting deer does not, um, equate to population management within a urban population. Just because you can never take enough, if that makes sense.
And, um,
They make a.
Come deer season, you know, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
Three weeks.
And that runs for two weeks in this area, so, for shotgun. So a lot of them deer are gonna be driven away.
Should be weaned out.
And they'll be weaned out.
My only fear is if Dan's hunting his land on Rum River, and my kids would be okay with, oh, look, he shot the deer, it's dead in our lawn. But let's say per se, they, they make it down to Jimmy's lot, and his kids are horrified by that. You know, I, I don't, I don't want that to happen.
My kids helped me try to track my deer last year, but.
Just, just saying, you know.
But, but I get what you're saying, yeah. I mean, it's not like it just stays in your yard alone, right?
I mean, Dan's gonna, you know, potentially bow hunt that deer, and it's gonna travel across Steve's land, my land, Paul's land, and, and it could die in your land, you know? And God forbid, if your kids were horrified by that. I mean, my kids would be like, oh, cool. Yours would be, oh, let's go get it, Dad, you know? But not everybody's like us. So that's my worry, but.
I don't think we should open up fronting. They make a, they make a powder for, that goes around trees and shrubs, rabbit and deer. And I've talked, cause I've got some issues with rabbits in my house, and I've talked to people that use it, and they said it works awesome.
My dad used bars of soap and, um, like a cheesecloth bag, hangs them from his apple trees. Hasn't had a problem.
I can say in six years, I've seen deer come down Main Street three times.
I don't think we should law it. I, I think that's opening up another can of worms. Well, no, I mean, I, it, it's, you live in town.
I enjoyed seeing the deer back, I saw a turkey, I've, I even saw a timber wolf back there before. But I don't think it's.
Bears been getting the problem this year all over.
I don't think it's.
I just saw a wolf Sunday.
Yeah.
Right on Whiskey Road. And if that wasn't a wolf, that's a huge coyote.
I don't think it, I haven't lived there in five years, but I don't think at that time it was a, like a problem of them overpopulating the neighborhood or causing troubles or anything.
But there's a lot of deer out this year though, compared to most. So it's, I see more deer on the road now this last year than I did in the last couple, so. It's a population thing, and if, when people go out and hunt, and if they get three licenses and they get three deer, that's three less deer that's gonna be out. So, uh, it's, like you said, a couple of weeks, it's gonna change, and it'll be a different story.
Those deer that run the river, they're, they're gonna be headed south, you know, towards Bjorkeland's land and other people's land. And that's all hunted, south of the city. There's tons of hunters, so. It'll, it'll, it'll affect it some.
Okay.
That was easy.
That was easy.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundin.
Second.
Second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero, therefore we stand adjourned.